Good evening, I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. I'd like to call the Hudsonville City Commission of December 13, 2022 to order. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please? Clerk?
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeVray?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Larrar?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Present. Now I'd like to have a moment of silence for the commission and for the public. One of the suggestions I had from one of the commissioners is we should take a moment to thank our community and our good country for a great holiday season in the name of Christ. Thank you. Now's the time for public comments. If there's anybody that chooses to address the commission, please step forward and state your name. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion now to amend our agenda tonight?
Yes, there is one motion on the floor already to amend the agenda.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend our agenda, to remove item number 14.
We will remove item 14, which was a concept on the library due to... Oh, we don't even need to say why. We're just remanding it.
Can you actually motion to table the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, I will make a motion to table item number 14.
Support.
And will be supported. Can we have a roll call? Any other discussion? Can we have a roll call, please, Clerk?
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, item 14 is tabled. Moving on to the consent agenda items, there are four minutes of the city commission regular session dated November 15th, special session dated November 15th, special session dated November 29th, and minutes of the Act 198 committee dated December 2nd. Is there a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second motion.
Moved and supported. Any discussion on those consent agenda items? Any changes? You all have read them? Hearing none? Consent agenda items, we can do voice vote, right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to new business, November Public Safety Statistical Reports. Chief? Good evening. No dumpster fires?
Seriously?
He brought it up.
There we are. November, we had 42 calls for service in the month of November. I did list out a couple of calls that were to note. Thanksgiving Day was a busy day. We started out early in the morning helping Georgetown on a structure fire on Chicago Drive, contained it to a truck inside of a building, and thought we had a good stop on it. Later that day in the evening, we went back, part of the building was on fire. So we spent our morning there for about three hours, and then our evening there for about three hours. So, busy day. And then also on the 30th, we had a fire on the roof of Intex, which is on Highland right behind McDonald's. They had fire in one of their ventilation units, and the product that was up in the ductwork was actually burning. So, got that out with minimal damage. They had a little damage to their building. So, had a few PR events throughout the month and our normal training. So, any questions?
On a commercial fire like that, isn't there a fire suppression system?
So that building was old enough that it did not, if we're speaking of the one on Chicago Drive. That was an older pole barn style building, it didn't have that. And then for the one on Intex, they actually do have a suppression system, but the fire was all on the roof. So up there, there isn't any protection.
Were there any equipment issues with you on either fires?
Nope, we were good. We had good turnout for personnel, our equipment worked perfectly. We got to use some of that new five inch hose that we bought last year, hadn't been off the truck, and all of a sudden, the span of a week, we used it three times. So, that's how it goes.
Any other questions or discussion for the fire chief? Well done, Steve. Thank your team.
Thank you.
Sergeant?
Month of November was pretty average, 194 calls. The only thing that's noteworthy is traffic crashes are increasing, and I would say a majority of those are 32nd. I took about half of them in the last month.
There was one today.
I was there. I took that one, too.
I waved, but you didn't wave back.
I saw you go bye. Can't miss your car. As far as some things the deputies did, every deputy in Ottawa County attended patrol rifle and handgun training. We actually go to a gravel pit down in Allegan County, and we spent eight hours training there. So we do lots of scenario-based training, and we also qualify, which we're supposed to do according to our certificates. So, we also did shop with a hero event at Meyer. We had lots of sheriff's deputies, lots of firefighters, I think we had a really good representation from Hudsonville Fire as well. Meyer was able to donate $100 gift cards to 50 kids that we selected from all of the schools in Hudsonville School District, and they all had a hero and went around and spent $100. So, just before the holidays, they were able to get some gifts for themselves, for their parents, for their siblings. So it was a really good turnout and well received by lots of people. I did take down the speed signs, if you haven't noticed, on 32nd, just in preparation of lots of corrosive salts for our speed signs. They will be coming back out. The rough number for traffic count was about 300,000 cars for one of those signs. So, with that number, my best guess is we have about a million cars a year going down at 32nd. So, I think it's going to be high for the speed studies that I think the DPW is doing as well. Other than that, everything is going well, and if anybody has any questions.
Where are we on body cameras for the Ottawa County Sheriff Department?
So, they just did a posting for jobs. What we've realized was waiting is, for instance, Allegan County has implemented about a quarter of their road patrol with body cameras. They had one support staff, they have since hired, I think, two or three more just to deal with all of the FOIA requests. We are an agency that is much larger than Allegan County. We just posted four positions for between all different types of things that relate to body cams. So we're going to fill those positions, get that all set, and the money is there. And it's just, we're not going to start it unless we can actually do the job correctly.
Patrick Waterman's leading that up, right?
I do not know that. I think it's been in the works for quite some time, so.
Any questions for the sergeant from the... Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Dave, good to see you. I want to thank you for the email you sent earlier today, too. That precipitated a lot of discussion with the commission.
Okay, well, hopefully it was good discussion. Didn't mean to throw a grenade in the room or anything like that. The report is, it was a pretty quiet month of November. Couple things I want to highlight. I mentioned that one of our former staff members came back, Ormando. I just wanted to give some context around that. He took a job transfer out of the area just over a year ago, and so really luckily he had to leave our department. As soon as he found a new job and came back, and he immediately contacted me to see if he could come back on, and it was great timing, we had an opening. So, it's great to have him back. He's a very dedicated, very reliable person on the team. And then, just wanted to comment on the holiday parade. I did, since the parade date, I did hear just a handful of comments from people. All of them were in support of the fact that we did not have a parade on that very, very cold day. So, I don't know if you all have heard any alternate feedback, but that's what I've heard so far.
Well, sometimes safety trumps everything, and that was a night where safety had to trump the parade. And it was painful to do, but it was the right decision. So Dave, your input was very appreciated there. Dave, what's your head count right now?
So, 12 including you.
And that's your, is that your sweet spot?
Yep, yep, that's what we were planning, and happy to get there about six months or so ahead of when I thought we might, so.
That's great.
Because that's been a long road.
You've done a really amazing job with your team.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Dave from the commission? Hearing none, thank you, Dave. Moving on to city facility AED units, is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the purchase of four cardiac science G5 semi-automatic AEDs from Team Life in the amount of $7,276.
Support. This movement is supported. Steve or Kayla, the one who wants to speak to this?
I can give you a little background on this. Four years ago, when we upgraded the AEDs in the fire department, we had the Phillips FR2s, and they were soon to be obsolete, and we knew that, so we upgraded ours that we carry on our rigs and in our cars. The ones that we had, and they were now obsolete, we put them actually one in City Hall, one at Terrace Square, one in DPW, one to library. So they've been there for four years. However, batteries and pads are no longer available. So as they go dead, they're done. So we had one that went dead at Terrace Square, and that's not good because that's out in the public. The pads are already expired. I think there's one set of pads that might be okay. They have a two-year shelf life on them. So, I went around each facility, checked the units, checked the batteries. We moved the one from DPW to Terrace Square, thinking it's a little more in the public eye. But the idea here is to bring all of those now up to the current standard. This would match them for brand and style to what we have, what we carry, but also what the sheriff carries in their cars. The beauty of that is, is if somebody would use one, and we respond to the call, which we would, we can replace the pads with the pads that we carry. So we stock spare pads and stock a spare battery. So that way, everything's the same across the board. We'll kind of take it under our wing a little bit, so that we can kind of keep an eye on it and make sure that they're functioning. So, take any questions that you have on them?
Is there any value to anybody else for the old units? I know you're saying that...
I'm going to say very little, but it's something that I would probably do a little Google search on, and I will do that, and see once we have, what, three units that have a little battery life left in them. We don't know how much, because it doesn't tell you. It could be a week, a month, a year yet, we don't know. But we can definitely go out there and check and see once we can get a few dollars.
Or even if they were usable, and there was a good opportunity to donate it to something that maybe they had a similar...
Yeah, to a church or something, yeah. Yep. You know, the problem is, you always have to throw the caveat in there, is, well, they're obsolete, and once, you know, and the pads are expired, so, and you can't get pads either. I guess I would feel bad if somebody tried to use it and it didn't perform.
Right.
I would, I'd feel better selling it to a company that might be able to refurb it or something, but...
I agree.
Doubtful, but we can certainly check into it.
Is there a value as a training tool?
Training tool?
Is there a value, if it would be used as that?
Um...
Maybe not within Hudsonville, but...
Yeah, we'd like to train with the one that we're going to perform with, and the same thing's going to go for like library staff. I'd like to go there and train Melissa's staff and just say, okay, here's how you, here's where you store it, and here's how you deploy it, here's how you use it. Obviously, call us, we're coming, but those initial few minutes. So same thing with DPW and some Terrace Square staff. I'd like to go out there and train them, not to bring them to where they're certified, but at least basic layman's hands-on AED. We probably wouldn't want to trade with a different brand, because it's going to be different buttons, different way of applying the pads.
Is this in the budget?
No. So, this is going to be a budget expansion that we're going to have to do, and since we're putting one in each building, right now, we're going to charge each building fund for the pads. So for example, City Hall, Mike is aware that this is going to affect his budget. Bob knows that we're going to charge him for his DPW. Melissa's aware that the library's going to, you know, do that. So the initial cost of them will come from each of the funds, and then maintenance and stuff like, like Steve said, he's going to kind of take over monitoring and making sure we're up to date with everything. So, it's not there, but safety, I think, trumps, you know, the amount that we're going to have to request.
Sergeant, you carry one in your vehicle?
All vehicles.
All your vehicles have an AED?
Yes.
Is it the same one?
Same one.
So they'll be consistent?
Yep.
Thank you, Steve, for doing the research on this and figuring out that this need to be done.
Yeah, no problem.
It saves lives. You only need one person, people are saved routinely by those.
Yeah, one incident, and it becomes very valuable.
And it happens. It does happen. Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve, well done. There's a motion on the floor, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to city treasurer report.
All right, so we're going to review the activity for the month of October. Right now, for the month of October, we were at 60.2% of our budgeted revenues and 34.7% of our budgeted expenditures. In the revenue summary, you can see that we brought in $281,887. About $160,000 of that was our state revenue sharing that we get bimonthly. That brings our year-to-date. That number in October is actually incorrect. I will go ahead and get it corrected. As you can see, the September number just copied over, but it's actually, the correct value is $3,564,011. In our expenditure summary, we expensed a little bit over $284,000, bringing our year-to-date to $2,198,478. Questions on our revenue and expense reports for the general summary? Okay. The next report we're going to look at is our investment report for the month of October. The CD at the very top is Choice One Bank that expired, which I was glad, because it was at a pretty low rate, .3%, which is really bad right now when rates are around 4%. So, I didn't buy a new one in October, because at the end of September, I did purchase a new one at 4%. So, I'll gladly get rid of like the .3s to get 4%. So, I'm working on getting that rate up for us. But overall, for the month, we brought in $10,573 in interest. Questions on that?
Yeah, Kayla, is the ARPA money we have, is that in one bond there, or how did you...
No, so you'll see it under Michigan Class Investment Pool, which is towards the bottom half of the, you can see the ARPA fund there. So that one actually brought in $1,900 of interest.
So we made $2,000 in the month, and we got the ARPA funds, when?
And we got those, it's been over a year already.
Well, we may have made $2,000 a month.
No, so right now, they're in an investment pool. They're not locked in, so it's a liquid investment pool, so I could pull the money tomorrow. I did not want to lock it in a CD, because we, I don't know when you guys want to use this money, and I didn't want it to be locked in a CD if you guys wanted to access it tomorrow. So it's in a liquid investment pool, instead of a checking account that's not going to earn anything. The investment pool for this month earned a little bit over 3%.
So my question would be, does the interest on the ARPA funds have the same criteria as the ARPA funds for spending?
No, you can use the interest for any city operation. So whatever you guys want to use that interest for, it doesn't have any tight backs.
Okay. Any questions for the treasurer? That's very interesting, thank you. Moving on to payment of the bills, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $681,145.70, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
Support. It's been moved and supported by members of the finance committee. Are there any questions? By the way, I've noticed that both of you have been doing more questions on some of the, some of the weekly, the weekly bills.
I like to have those conversations with you guys, it makes me feel like you're engaged.
Yeah, and I do, when I see that, it makes me feel like you're actually reading it, and actually see stuff like, why are we paying this interest? Or, what was the answer in that one? No, that one, forget it. So there's a motion on the floor, any discussion for payment of the bills? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item number 10, ACH Fund Distribution, is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the funds distributed by automated clearinghouse in the amount of $125,752.61, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the interim city manager.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries distribute the funds. Moving on to item number 11, 40th Avenue Street Maintenance Agreement with MDOT, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 22-1754, accepting contract number 22-5453 between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Hudsonville for construction work on 40th Ave from Grant to Van Buren.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. Can we have the memo brought up to the computer, please? This was a memo prepared by DPW supervisor Bob Miller. I think this is within the standard form, contracts $241,000, federal funds cover $43,000. Any other comments on that, Kayla?
No, this is just a routine contract that we have to sign with MDOT in order to get the grant, but it's all budgeted for already, so we just need to sign this, get it to MDOT so that we can get the money in time for the project to begin.
Any other questions for staff from the commission?
Just to clarify, so that it's about a $200,000 grant we're able to leverage. That's really cool.
That's really good. And we need to get that work done. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, moving on to item number 12, West Michigan Beef IFT application. I believe, Tobin, you were the one that sat in on this?
Yep, the Act 198 committee met for the second time with the applicant regarding this process. The first time was to establish the proper zoning district that overlaid it to make it eligible for the exemption that they're applying for. So, with that being done, they met, we met with them again this past month at the last meeting, and we recommend approval of their exemption. There was some discussion on the term of the exemption. Typically, it's, I believe, seven years, and then we, I have to go back and look at the minutes, but there was a seven plus three, I believe, is that correct? Six plus six. Thank you, Jill. So normally, we have approved applicants that apply for this for a six-year, and then they can come and reapply for another six years for the same exemption. In this case, the discussion was over, first let me step back, there's never been a situation where the six plus six hasn't been approved. So the 12 years have always happened, it's just a formality to some degree. In this case, we recommend that we approve the 12 years upfront, given the scope of the project, and what the West Michigan Beef is committing to doing here, and the size of their project. That was a discussion that was unanimous within the group, so.
Good job. Can you make a motion?
Yeah, I can do that, unless you guys have any more questions.
Well, let's get the motion out there in the week now.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 22-1755 to set a public hearing for January 10, 2023, to consider the request to West Michigan Beef Company LLC for an industrial facilities exemption, sir. That's not the right motion, is it?
Yeah, we're just setting a date, right? Setting the date for the public hearing, right?
Yes.
For the industrial facilities exemption?
Yes.
I thought that was, okay. My apologies. Do you want me to read, reread the whole thing?
No, I think we're clear. All right, support. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion, Larry?
I know in the past we did it, because we wanted a checkpoint to see if they were living up to their obligations. And so we had a means that if they did not, we could revoke it, because we are losing tax money, as is this county. So I'm a little, I know we've always done it, I mean, it's always come through because they've lived up to it, but I guess I'd like that check valve, just to make sure their obligations are being met.
That's a great idea.
Can I put something in? Just as a observational standpoint, I don't think our checking on them has been accomplished.
In the past?
Correct.
So we've had a checkpoint that was never used?
Correct.
Was that discussed?
Shame on us, then.
The discussion was centered around the fact that it has always, it's just, it's a formality, which we are one of the very few municipalities to act...
Only one.
The only one, that actually exercises the extension. It's, we're kind of an outlier in that regard.
How'd you find that out? Did you call around, or what?
FAD, FAD, our assessing division manager, has mentioned it numerous times to me.
Ah, very well. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, I'd like to thank Tobin for his efforts there, and for the applicant, that we have a public hearing still, more of a formality, but this is a big deal for the community to have West Michigan Beef still in the city limits and providing us good wholesome food.
And I would like to add, I'm excited to see that there is a tie that Hudsonville still has to the agricultural history, the tradition.
And the retention of the Red Barn, I think, is a powerful statement about our community.
It's very important having them there in that location with that perception.
They've been good neighbors, I've never seen...
Been there a long time.
I've never, I've never seen a piece of livestock, I've never smelled anything. It's true.
Well, okay, I live right up the hill, and we've had cows walk through.
How many years ago was that?
Eight, eight.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
My wife used to run a water meter there, and it was a challenge. Did you, did you last sue it then, or what?
Let's just say, they lost it. We had a freezer full of beef.
Okay, let's, moving on, no more discussion about West Michigan Beef. We have a...
Jeff, your neighborhood, too.
We have a public hearing. We have a public hearing. When is the public hearing, clerk?
January 10.
January 10. Thank you very much. And that's our next city commission. Is that right? Okay. Moving on to item number 13, city manager appointment. Is there a motion?
This motion is to make a conditional offer of employment as Hudsonville city manager to Tyler Dotson contingent upon successful contract negotiations and background check.
A second.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion by the commission?
I think I will say something. Just to make it as a matter of note, we have two incredibly qualified candidates, and we had quite the discussion and went back and forth. And I think a number of people on the commission went back and forth based on what each other said. Two very, very, very qualified candidates. Very tough decision.
I'd like to thank the staff, too, for their support in all this. This is not an easy one for us to...
Absolutely.
City manager is a pretty important person for us in the city.
Yeah, he's right. You know, two very qualified candidates, you know, for our city. And I appreciated the honesty, the honest conversation from the commission, from the staff. I, it was very beneficial in our decision, so thank you.
I'd really like to thank the staff. They, they really came out and, and put some effort and time and energy into it.
Hearing no other discussion, I will call for the roll.
Commissioner LaRar?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, and motion carries. I will inform the recruiter following the city commission meeting, and I would ask Andrea that you'd hold off notifying the staff until I've notified the recruiter to notify the candidate.
Mayor Mark?
Both candidates.
Both candidates.
Is it possible to write into the contract that there be no Ohio State references in the office?
Along the color red?
Yes.
And then the, the follow-on thing is that we will have to work with salary negotiation, and that is something that I'll be working quite closely with Kayla and the personnel committee. And then the sal, final salary could have come back to us or not, you know? This is all news to me how we're going to... Larry, you recall?
It has a payoff.
Yeah, so it did the last time.
So we may have to call a work session for that? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might be a Jessica question, but maybe.
Yeah, probably. So we may have to call for a work session in two weeks, which is not, don't tell me that's Christmas, is it? No.
Between the two. It's between the two.
Okay, we may have to wait till January. Okay. So we'll try to negotiate that salary, then we'll come back to the city commission for that decision.
If necessary.
If necessary in January.
Two weeks is 27th.
27th. So we should, I just need a quorum. I mean, I'll be here.
I'll be here. I think we can...
I think we can pull two.
We can make it.
I think we can make it work.
We can make it happen.
We can make it happen. Okay. So I want to thank the staff and the commissioners for the support. This is not an easy one for any one of us, as, as you all know. Moving on to item 15, approval of the city commission meeting schedule for 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the city commission meeting schedule for 2023 as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. I think most commissioners and staff is aware that I've called for work sessions in 2023 to be on the schedule, that we need to visit all our city properties and to view the, view the equipment and have a better understanding of some of the things that the staff has to deal with on a day-to-day basis, the parks, the pump houses, the DPW facility, Terrace Square, City Hall. I think there's a lot of things that, quite frankly, I'd like to get my, just put my hand on and look at. So I want these to be technical kind of discussions, and I think it'd be healthy for all of us to have a better feeling. They will not be mandatory. They'll be optional if you want to attend, but I think it'd be healthy for all of us to attend. Any other questions on the schedule?
I have a question about, just Jill, are we good on these dates as far as elections go?
Yes, I already checked that.
Okay, good.
You will not have to miss a meeting to go hunting.
Any other discussion on the schedule? Hearing none. Do I need a roll call on that, or is that a voice count? Voice? All those in favor of the...
No, it says roll call.
It does say roll call?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, it does say roll call. So roll call, please.
Commissioner LaRar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Thank you for that work on putting that schedule together. It says, I know it's not an easy thing. It looks easy, but it really isn't, Jill. Thank you. Moving on to item 16, Terrace Square Purchase and Development Agreement, 90-day extension. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 22-1756 to approve a 90-day extension for the purchase and development agreement between the City of Hudsonville and Terrace Station LLC dated June 14, 2022.
It's been moved and supported. I think the memo is pretty clear. You got anything to add to this, Kayla? Or Dan?
Yeah, Dan is the one that's been dealing with the development.
Dan, do you want to just briefly, real quick, on that? Why we're, are we slowly walking this on a purpose, or?
Uh, no, there's just, um, they're purchasing a piece of property from the city, so the boundaries of that have not yet been determined, so that needs to be surveyed, and that has to be done first before they can do their due diligence on the property, you know, the environmental studies and soil borings, that kind of thing, so just, there's still some legwork that has to happen yet.
Is the survey on the schedule?
Not that I'm aware of. So I'm working on that right now, so, working with Jamie Boo, talking to our attorney a little bit, so still trying to get that wrapped up.
Yeah, there's certainly a weight in the industry right now on surveys, so anything you can do to help them with that process or help ourselves, that's, probably will help speed things along.
It's a very long lead time right now.
Any questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan. Hearing no other discussion, I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Before I call for the adjournment, let's just go down the die, starting with Tobin. Good to see you tonight.
I appreciate how the discussions that we had earlier today went, the level of respect among all of us in that, in that room. It was, it was a fun discussion, differences in opinions. But at the end, I think we, well, I know that we all agree and support the direction we're moving, so thanks for that process.
I'd echo that, and just wanted to thank the city and the staff for the tree lighting event downtown. It was, it was a riot. Love, love being part of this community and being able to celebrate those things at this season. It's, it's fantastic. So thanks to all of you that were out there. Appreciate it.
Tobin stole my thunder, but the other, and rightfully so, but specifically you five right there, I appreciated your time last night, and I appreciated your honesty in our conversations, and thank you for participating. Jill? Larry?
Yeah, I would echo that, too. I appreciate the time I was able to spend with all of you and, and the thoughts and your honesty and openness. And I also appreciated that we, as a commission, had a very honest and open discussion, and at the end of the day, we were all able to vote yes in the same person, even though we had varying opinions.
Yeah, you know, Mayor made a comment to me after the previous meeting and just what a privilege, privilege it is to work with a group of people like this. You know, you look at neighboring communities or even just not neighboring communities across the state, and they don't, don't all work together the way we do. And it says a lot, so I appreciate that.
All good.
Jill, you got anything to add?
Thank you for listening to the staff.
All right, and our next meeting then would probably be the 27th of December, work session to get approval on compensation package.
Special session.
Special session, thank you.
That'd be 7:00 on the 27th?
Yes. Unless you want to do it at 6:00.
I'd be fine with 6:00.
Want to do it at 6:00? Make it 6:00, please. Anybody from the staff or in the audience wishes to address the commission one last time?
I'll just say thank you to you guys for your effort, you know, the way that process went. It was appreciated just how much effort and care all of you put into that, and it was appreciated that the staff was included, too, so just thank you for, you know, big, hard decision you had to make, so just appreciate it. Thank you.
That means a lot, being one of our most senior department heads here. Thank you. Finally, I'd like to wish happy birthday to Andrea, and, and congratulations on the new vehicle and the new baby. And I think you'll sleep well tonight because you've worked very hard these last couple of weeks, so thank you very much for all the effort and...
Very well. It's two, three hours, so...
Anything else?
Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas to all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.